My pleasure.
The Pan African Film and Arts Festival is the largest exhibition of film, art, culture, and creative expression honoring Black History Month. We recently made a visit to Arts Fest where we got a peek at some of the unique creations. Take a look.
The Pan African world is as a result of slavery and colonization. African people, or people of African descent, have been spread all over the planet. Papua New Guinea, Australia, Nigeria, Ghana, England. Part of our story is all those different places. And this festival brings all those stories together so folks can get out and get a more sophisticated, more cosmopolitan understanding of the African experience.
I find that the human face is quite expressive, so I apply it in my works to convey a wide range of emotions associated with the human experience.
Are you a fan of Japanese manga? Well, if you are, then you've got to check out the North American debut of one of the genre's most celebrated artists. Gil Reyes shows us a new exhibit at Japan House Los Angeles.
He's not a household name in the U.S. yet, but artist Naoki Urasawa is considered by many to be the modern master of Japanese manga, or comics. We spoke to fans in Hollywood.
Monster is easily one of the best mangas of all time.
In his work, many of his work, it goes around the world, showing different cultures, people from different backgrounds.
Japan House Los Angeles, located in the Hollywood and Highland Complex, is proud to present this exhibit through March. And the beauty is, even if you can't understand Japanese, the panels are all in English, so Americans can come and truly appreciate them.
The reader's always ready to turn the page, or wanting to turn that page to see what happens next.
Curator Trast Howard describes the popular series Monster, a morality tale about a surgeon who saves the life of a serial killer.
What Urasawa is so good at is that he throws in these twists that you don't expect.
Urasawa has sold over 127 million books in Japan alone. He's nominated for an Eisner Hall of Fame induction at Comic Con this year, an honor usually reserved for American comic book creators like Stan Lee. Urasawa's works, such as 20th Century Boys, dealing with terrorism, can be dark, but he has lighter fare, too.
Yawara is a story about a young teenage female judo athlete, influenced, interested not only the sport, but a particular judo athlete.
When real-life judo champ Ryoko Tamura represented Japan in the 1992 Olympics, the public embraced her as the real-life Yawara. It was also a time when more Japanese women began entering the workforce and establishing their independence.
And what was actually happening in Japan in the society at the time, and I think that's what really piqued everyone's interest.
Historical events influencing fiction. This is manga, the art of Naoki Urasawa in his first North American exhibit. That's at Japan House at the Hollywood and Highland Complex at 6801 Hollywood Boulevard.
Want to check out more cultural events from Japan House? Learn more at japanhouse.jp. What do you get when you mix hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of cookies, and hundreds of goodie bags? Well, Big Sunday's annual Valentine-making dinner, of course. This nonprofit is all about putting a smile on the faces of those less fortunate. Take a look.
Today is our seventh annual Big Sunday Valentine's Day. Nobody should be forgotten on Valentine's Day. Making cards, we're making little gift bags, there's tons of chocolate going on and flowers going on. And all these nice people have come here to make Valentine's for other people. Old folks, people in shelters, people in group homes, veterans, people who are ailing.
I was specifically thinking about some of the people in hospitals and maybe even nursing homes, because my dad just moved into a nursing home a year ago. And so for me, it's really personal, because when I get to go visit him, I see how few of those people have families all around them, or are getting, you know, things for the holidays.
We're just here to help out and have fun.
I believe that it's a wonderful thing to teach our kids to give back to those less fortunate than ourselves, and it just makes you feel so good. It fills your heart.
If it brightens somebody's day by looking at a simple card, by just saying we care or love you, that makes my day.
When we do something, because we feel like we have to, it kind of brings one energy to it. But when we do something because we know that it, like, we get something out of it, too, I don't know, I think it just infuses everything with just that fun and loving energy that we can put more of in the world.
We called Big Sunday because we used to be one day a year on a Sunday, but we have grown. We first became a weekend, and then a three-day weekend, now we do things 365 days a year. The idea is that absolutely everybody has some way they can help somebody else. We connect people through helping.
We're all really connected, no matter what we look like or where we are in our life, there's something that just runs through all of us.
And over in Silmar, hundreds of seniors also got some well-deserved TLC, as Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez hosted a Valentine's Day ball in their honor. Let the dancing begin.
We have arrived in Funky Town, the great community of Silmar, hosting a day of dining and dancing for some 400 seniors on Valentine's Day. Many of the guests are longtime married couples like Jose and Linda Anaya. When you first saw her, what did you think?
She's mine.
It took a little while, but I totally fell in love with them and still in love with them today.
Older adults loving life and each other at Palacio Torres Banquet Hall. This party was thrown by Silmar Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
It really is a unique opportunity for me to bring together all of the seniors from around my district, because each of the senior centers are located in different parts of the community, that we bring them all here together to celebrate Valentine's Day, show a little love, and bring some of the resources that are available to them, whether it's advising them on their Medicare options, or just all the variety of service providers that we have.
A little wet weather outside didn't stop these older adults from stepping in out of the rain and onto the dance floor today, all to themselves. So our seniors, God bless them, they bring to us a wealth of experience. I asked some of them, on this Valentine's Day, what is the secret to everlasting love?
Your opposites.
Yeah, we're opposite. He's quiet and I'm the... I act too much.
That's the secret.
Yeah.
Have a good match there.
Yeah.
What's your secret?
Say yes.
Oh, so smart. Easy, he's sweet.
Raul and Barbara Fontenilles have been happily married for 54 years. They're also the in-laws of Councilwoman Rodriguez.
We love her like a daughter.
And it helps a lot to be family-oriented.
Yeah.
It's keeping us together.
Always be affectionate to each other. A lot of times that goes away in a marriage, and I think it needs to be that way till the day you die. Always and forever.
Electric Lodge is an environmentally friendly cultural arts hub and educational center in Venice. We recently took a tour with the Electric Lodge founder, Joel Shapiro.
The Electric Lodge started in 1996. I started it then. I rebuilt the whole building, and it's been going ever since. It's a visual and performing arts center and environmental center. We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electric Lodge is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
Tonight, we're putting on a variety show called Next 10, so that's one of the things we do here every first Monday of the month. We have 10 people participating for 10 minutes each, and it's a really cool and fun audience participation-type show that almost anyone can enter.
Unfortunately, people know almost nothing about the Electric Lodge, and that is such a shame, because it's such a great community venue. And, oh, and, there is a parking lot. There is a parking lot in Venice. So if you do not live in Venice and you think to yourself, "No, I am not going to Venice to see anything," come to the Electric Lodge, because it's got its own lot. You don't have to worry about it.
Batter's up. Did you know there was a Wrigley Field in Los Angeles? As part of African-American Heritage Month, Councilmember Kern Price joins us for a tour of the stadium's impact on our community.
The original Wrigley Field opened on September 29, 1925, in the heart of Council District 9, on the corner of Avalon Boulevard and 42nd Place. It was constructed by William L. Wrigley, Jr., the founder of Wrigley's Gum, and owner of the Chicago Cubs. It was built at a cost of just under $1 million. It hosted major league baseball teams in the region for over 30 years. Wrigley Field was home to the Los Angeles Angels during their inaugural season in 1961. Over the years, Wrigley Field hosted rodeos, concerts, fireworks, and other special events. The ballpark was even used as a backdrop for several Hollywood films about baseball, as well as the popular TV series Home Run Derby.
Foul ball way down the left field line, and that's all in the second inning. Carmen Killebrew picks up a homerun and leads Mickey Mantle in the Home Run Derby contest at the end of an inning and a half of play by a score of 1 to 0.
On May 26, 1963, Martin Luther King was at Wrigley Field to address nearly 40,000 people at one of the largest civil rights rallies in the country, predating the famous 1963 March on Washington by almost three months. Wrigley Field is still remembered as the place where Dr. King stated, "Birmingham or Los Angeles, the cry is always the same: We want to be free."
Birmingham, Alabama, or Los Angeles, California, the cry is always the same: We want to be free.
His efforts that evening to connect Los Angeles to Birmingham helped to raise significant and desperately needed funds for the March on Washington, and to assist in supporting the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. In 1969, Wrigley Field was demolished. In its place now exists the Gilbert Lindsay Community Park, the Teresa Lindsay Senior Center, and the Kedron Community Health Center. As we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, we not only pay tribute to individuals, but also celebrate the locations where historical events helped to define our legacy and change American history.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian hosts a community town hall. Get ready to catch some air at a new skate park and learn how to raise funds for your nonprofit. All this in City View. Councilmember Paul Krikorian recently hosted a town hall meeting in North Hollywood, which allowed community members direct access to the L.A. Department of Public Works. One goal was to make residents aware of available programs and services they may not be taking full advantage of.
To hear from them directly about what is important in their neighborhood, what's important in their community.
In South L.A., the CD9 Business Resource Center presented a forum on funding for nonprofits. The event featured presentations by several leading foundations, and included panel discussions, Q &amp; As, and more.
I came here because we're a nonprofit organization, and we're always looking for funding sources.
And now you can catch some air of your own. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell broke ground on the new Chevy Chase Skate Park. When complete, the park will feature 8,000 square feet of spiffy concrete skate features, as well as improvements to the surrounding areas. Happy Lunar New Year. It was a melting pot of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese culture, as thousands of folks came together for the 120th Golden Dragon Parade.
I want to wish everybody gong hao bao choi, a great and prosperous New Year here in the fresh and best Chinatown in United States of America. A great Happy New Year.
Also, it's the year of the pig, and it's a very social pig. It's about reminding us to get together with our neighbors, with our community, with our country and the world, together, in peace and harmony.
This is an incredible time, steeped in deep traditions and history, but a holiday that we're all looking forward with great optimism and positivity.
It's so nice to see everybody coming together as a community to celebrate such a momentous occasion for the New Year.
Enjoy an evening of music that includes a vacuum cleaner? Listen to some live jazz at a pop-up? And if you love chocolate and art, you won't want to miss this show. All this and Things to Do. And the beat goes on, as Compose L.A. brings you Leah Mooney's Flatland. This latest music symposium is happening at the Coaxial Arts Foundation. The presentation will include an examination of Leah Mooney's sound-driven investigation of materiality. Be sure to check out Compose L.A.: Leah Mooney's Flatland on Friday, February 22, beginning at 8:00 p.m. The Coaxial Arts Foundation is located at 1915 South Main Street. For more info, visit coaxialarts.org. Black History Month festivities continue with the Just Jazz Live Concert Series. This free pop-up jazz event features performances by local jazz collective Catalyst, and music from the Fernando Pollam Community Arts Center Jazz Ensemble. Swing by the Just Jazz Live Pop-Up Event, happening Thursday, February 21, at 6:30 p.m. The performance takes place at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza on 3650 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. For more info, visit justjazzliveconcertseries.com. The Chocolate and Art Show returns to Los Angeles. Indulge in some of L.A.'s finest up-and-coming artists, photographers, and creators. Enjoy live body painting, vendors, music, and free chocolate. It's all happening at the Chocolate and Art Show, Los Angeles, coming February 22 and 23. The show will take place at the Vortex, located at 2341 East Olympic Boulevard. For details, contact chocolateandart@gmail.com. And that's a look at Some Things to Do. Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week. MayaLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app. Available from the App Store or on Google Play. MayaLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. Request graffiti removal. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is our city and our channel. [Music] Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 20th. I want to welcome you to City Hall in Los Angeles. This is Los Angeles Council Chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Coretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wes Smith, Wesson, ten members present on quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves, Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Coretz moves, and Harris-Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items one through ten are items noticed for public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards on all items, sir.
Okay, well, we'll hold those items, and let's move on to the next section.
Items eleven through twenty-one are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item twenty-one has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Coretz?
I'd like to call twenty-one special.
Let's hold item twenty-one at Mr. Coretz's request, and let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. If you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request for item thirteen to go forth with, sir.
So ordered.
Items twenty-two through thirty-four are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on twenty-two through thirty-four, sir.
All right, so then let's move on.
Items thirty-five and thirty-six are items scheduled for closed session.
All right, let me defer to Mr. Krikorian. If you would advise us on these items, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item thirty-six is a settlement that was considered by the Budget and Finance Committee that can be heard in open session unless members have questions or concerns that they'd like to discuss in closed session. Item thirty-five is a report from the City Attorney's Office that will need to be conducted in closed session.
Okay, so let's vote on item thirty-six. Would you read that item?
Yes, sir. In the item number thirty-six in the case entitled John N. Vidovic versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend eight hundred thousand in settlement.
Okay, so on this item, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special, public comment, or presentation, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Preven, if you could please come forward. Sergeants, if you could remove the rope from the center aisle. Mr. Preven, we have items one through nine, and then items twenty-three through twenty-seven, twenty-nine through thirty-three, and then your one minute for general public comment. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Preven from Studio City, and I want to just shout out CD two. We have two items in which a majority protest existed, and therefore the lighting districts in my district and the great district of Paul Krikorian are not going to be set up. We're not going to be assessed the higher rate because of our work. Now, in Price's district, of course, move forward. Let's move forward. There's a number that are, let's move forward with assessing people. But in my district, where the Budget and Finance Chair rules, we were able to notify the people in our district to protest, for God's sakes. Because if you protest, you can make an impact in your community if you think it's the right thing to do. So I think that's a good message for the people. Now, the Tefra hearings, which I know you got Sadio up on your lap on this one, sir, and Marquise Harris-Dawson as well, we're talking about Tefra hearings. Now, these are not that big. A hundred million dollar bond offering and seventy-five million dollar one specifies the number of projects. The other doesn't. I mean, it specifies the number of projects but not the number of units. So maybe you need to dig into the agenda. But the agenda, and this is where I'm going to get a little upset, sir, is not in the room. You are denying the public access to the Tefra hearing. Item number one, Mr. Faubel, so keep your mouth shut, please. Number two, from CD fifteen, so once again, keep your mouth to yourself, because I'm talking about the Tefra hearings.
No, Mr. Preven, stay on subject. No, stay on, no, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. So back on subject. Back on subject, or...
Tefra hearing is on subject, sir. Okay. Once again, totally inappropriate.
Okay, let's give Mr. Preven his one...
Now, as for the vacation of property on item number four, on item number four, no, do not take my general time.
Give him his one minute for general public comment. Go on, Mr. Preven. You don't run this meeting.
I'm not going to be violated by your crew or you.
Nobody is violating you. You have your one minute.
Yes, you are, sir. I'm allowed to talk about CD fourteen, and you're taking my general public comment to do that. CD fourteen is where the vacation request by Mr. Weezer, you may recall, it drew my interest when Mitchell O'Farrell was up in the Budget and Finance Committee playing matchmaker with somebody who was being tortured by the city and Weezer when Rochelle was still running for office. This is a different one, perhaps, but I can't tell because there's not an agenda in the room. And your endless efforts to stymie the people is completely inappropriate. It really is. And I think people are starting to realize that. I think you saw the Los Angeles Times. If you Google my name and the Los Angeles Times, you can hear about how Ms. Martinez stepped off course yesterday under Mr. Faubel's leadership. And Michelson, the guy who was featured in the, and go to @EricPreven Twitter, E-R-I-C-P-R-E-V-E-N, one word. Go there, and you can see some documents about your behavior. Totally inappropriate, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Preven.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. In fact, Mr. Sax, let's get Mr. Sax. Are you still here? Arnold Sax? All right, then if I can get Ms. Martinez to come take the chair.
Excuse me. Can I take pictures in here?
Yes.
Right there from the...
All of us. Let's get the whole crew. Where are you? You to my right. Madam President and members, February is Black History Month, and we have been trying to acknowledge some phenomenal people from our community every opportunity that we've had during this month. Even though, and if you guys want to know what we as black people do during Black History Month, we plan what we're going to do the rest of the year. So part of what we're doing today is bringing some folk here, one in particular that I'm very excited about, and you should be very excited about, is we highlight some of the accomplishments of African Americans throughout this country. I want you to picture this. Let's say in any one of your council districts, just your council district, if a local newspaper designated one of the children or young people from your district as maybe the, one of the most twenty, the most important young people in the district, one of the twenty-five most important young people of your district, can you imagine how proud you would be of your district? Maybe it's in the local paper, you'd go get a hundred copies, give it to everybody. You would call everybody that you know and say, "In Council District One or Council District Five, my son or my daughter was recognized as one of the most influential young people in that district." Now, I may be off a little bit here or there, but I believe that there are forty-two million young people of the ages between ten and nineteen in this country. Forty-two million. And imagine if it was a young person from your district, or your son or daughter, or your grandson or daughter, and they were recognized as one of the most, one of the twenty-five most influential young people in the United States of America, not by some local neighborhood newspaper, but by the Times Magazine. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the honor and the privilege to present to you a young lady that is recognized as one of the twenty-five most influential young people in this country, Tandaway Abdullah. Give her a round of applause. Out of forty-two million children, forty-two million young people. And now, I'm sure each and every one of you would be excited if somebody called you and said, "Mr. Price, in your district, we have this young lady," and you'd be excited. But for me, it's a little different. I'm going to embarrass her for a minute. And you have to understand, one of the things that older people do is embarrass younger people.
I can see that.
This is so special to me is because when I met her, she was just a little boo-boo. And her mom, a little short lady, would walk the community every morning, and when I'd come out to get the paper or whatever, she had one of those double strollers, two kids in a stroller, and I'd get a chance to look at them and what have you. Then, next thing I know, time goes by, and she's not in the stroller. You're in the stroller. Because it started out with two, and she's walking with her mom and her brother and her sister. So I had an opportunity to watch... So I had an opportunity to watch her grow up. And as a grandparent of two granddaughters myself, she's the type of young lady that will inspire them and they will look up to her. I don't know if you guys have heard of the school, Los Angeles Center for Enriched Studies. It's in my district. It's called Laces. It has historically been one of the best schools in the United States of America. In fact, Mr. Harris Dawson, when I first got here, we honored them. They were in the top fifty. I think they were forty-six. This young lady is a sophomore at that school. She's on the honor roll and she is also, thank God, an active soccer player. Because you want to see balance. Think about this, fourteen years old. When I was fourteen, what I would do on Saturdays, me and my guys would get together and we would change comic books. And here she is being one of the most influential teens in this nation. She helped, she's a co-founder of the Black Lives Matter Youth Vanguard. She was involved in the March for Our Lives and gave a very inspirational speech and she talked about Mr. Kukarian gun violence and the effect on black youth. She is also, now I don't know enough about Hollywood, so, but my notes told me she was a stage actress. As far as I'm concerned, that means you're just an actress. And last year, I was at an event with LA Can. Mr. Herman, control yourself. I was at an event at LA Can and this young lady was there selling raffle tickets or whatever and no one could refuse her. We have a responsibility to do everything that we can to protect kids that don't get a break and where their life is tough and life is hard. But we also have a responsibility to recognize those who are great kids with a great future because they're going to be the leaders of tomorrow. I am so proud of her that I really don't have the ability to articulate how proud I am of her. When I talk to her mom, who I'm proud of also, her mom, let's give Melina Abdullah a round of applause. The last time her mother was in this building, she was pointing her finger at me, "Are you going to do this?" And then after that, she hugged me and left. But this is a single mother raising three kids. Work drives her, it takes almost all of the time she has, but she somehow finds more time to work in the community. And then on top of that, she has to raise three kids. Well, I know you're proud, but I want to let you and your mom and dad know that we are all proud of her. So ladies and gentlemen, I would like to, for this Black History Month, for this day, recognize Tandaway Abdullah as one of the twenty-five most influential young people in the United States of America out of forty-two million young people. Give her a round of applause. No, 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 don't worry about it. I think I hear grandpa talking in the background. I can hold that for you, but I'm going to ask you to say a few words, okay?
Okay.
Where's my?
Right there.
You get in here.
Hi. So, my name is Tandaway Abdullah. Actually turned fifteen in November. So I go to Laces. It's on Eighteenth and Fairfax and I'm a sophomore. And when I was little, I think I was like six years old, I started some organization with my friends called the Junior Feenah Fighters. And we would like sit and just talk about the problems in the world and how we need to protect the animals and stop all the wars. And we thought that our little like group of friends was going to solve that. And I remember one day we got a phone call. This is when Barack Obama was campaigning to run again, right? Was campaigning to become the president again. I wish he was still there. And someone from his campaign called and it said White House on my phone. So I'm like six years old, I'm like, oh my God, the White House is calling me. So I answer it. So I answer it and he's like, "How would you like to donate?" I said, "You need to end all the wars right now. End them all right now and then maybe I'll donate." And I vaguely remember this, but my mom, she busted up laughing last night telling me the story again and how I would like email the like mass letters that the president would send to everyone. And it just like, it's so funny thinking about that now and kind of realizing like, even though it was a little naive, it kind of is, it kind of was like a beginning point. So now like we're campaigning with a lot of, well, we were campaigning with a lot of the teachers to get random searches out of our schools because we found out that they were criminalizing a lot of black youth. And we actually won that with our last strike when a lot of students stood with the teachers. And we're so thankful to them for doing that for us because we realized like our teachers do have our interests best at heart. And so now I'm working with my principal to make sure our school becomes one of the schools with no random searches. And so, yeah, we're making sure that we decriminalize the way, our schools and we decriminalize the way that our society views black youth, especially because we're so vulnerable and we want to have a voice. We want to be able to like speak out against the things that harm us and just speak out against things that harm people in general. But we know that there's an attack on black bodies and black people and I think it's really important, especially in Black History Month, to recognize that and to kind of give way to the people who are most vulnerable and I think that's black youth, especially black queer youth and black Muslim youth, which includes me, and black trans youth. So that's the real intersectionality and that's the work that I'm trying to do. So, and thank you. Thank you so much. It means a lot to me.
Let's give her a round of applause. It's the future. Members, thank you very much.
Mr. Weston, I have, I have a member on the queue, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Weston, for bringing this presentation today. We do a lot for Black History Month and we're proud to have you be a part of it because a big part of what we want to do is talk about black futures and what the future of black people in Los Angeles but the United States is. And you're a big, big part of that. Mr. Weston laid out all of the work that you've done. I worked most closely with you, besides watching you. I got, I was a little bit before Mr. Weston. I saw you when you were here and it wasn't quite a stroller. But we watched you work at the Freedom Schools here in Los Angeles, teaching other young people. And to you, it might just be a summer camp, but what you don't realize is people, little kids saw you and now that they're in their teens, they're becoming activists like you. So just every day that you wake up and you burn that light and you're about the business of freedom and you're about the business of lifting up our folks, people are watching you and people are, a storm is gathering. And so I want to applaud you and just remind you, no pressure at all. But Harriet Tubman was just a little bit older than you when she took her first caravan from the South, from slavery to freedom. And so you're in the tradition of Harriet Tubman, you're in the tradition of your mama. And we appreciate you and love you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Weston, thank you for bringing in this beautiful presentation. Not surprised that it's a young woman leading that, leading that cause. But I think it's, it's really wonderful to bring in and celebrate the work that you're doing and that you just, you know, congrats, Mom. I think, you know, as a mom, I can tell you, I can't imagine a greater feeling to watch your daughter lead in the way that she is. But I think you're, you know, you're doing it not just for your community, you're doing it for Los Angeles, you're doing it for our country. And I want to thank you for using your voice and letting your light shine so that every kid has a brighter future. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Weston.
Members, again, thank you very much. I mentioned yesterday that we have a responsibility to provide our young people with an opportunity where they can thrive. And this is a result of what will happen when they are afforded the opportunity to grow and learn and thrive. And to the grandparents that are here, because I'm a grandparent, doesn't this make, this is what it's all about. This is what it's all about. Because we spent our entire lives trying to live a better life than our parents so that our kids and grandkids can live a better life than us. So let's give her one more round of applause and thank you very much for accommodating me on this day.
Okay, members, let's move on to our, the rest of our agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration on items twelve and thirteen. Now that we have twelve members present, let's open the vote for reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Here, those items are not before us. Let's go ahead and vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Madam President, there's a request for item thirteen to go forthwith.
With that objection, that would be the order. Let's go, let's go ahead and open up item twenty-one. Mr. City Attorney, do you have an announcement on item twenty-one? Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have a conflict of interest in item and must recuse myself, so I am leaving the chambers.
Okay, let's take you off the roll then. Remove Mr. Smith. Off of item twenty-one, that item is not before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
All right, let's go ahead and go on to multiple speaker cards. Mr. Herman, are you here?
I'm right here.
Clerk, you're speaking on items one through seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty-two A, twenty-two B, through twenty-two E, twenty-three, through thirty-four. Go ahead.
Fucking wetbacks right here. So as you know, fellow Americans, regarding the responsibility of Tefra, we're finding out that one billion dollar in bonds is being stolen by the city of Los Angeles due to rental housing crisis, due to affordable housing crisis, and to, to white niggers like you who believe we have a dream. Fuck Obama. And then on item number two, as I said, the Italian from the Fifteenth Dietrich Dickhead Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two, Tefra Joe fucking Busciano and his multifamily rental housing projects, fuck you too. Just like you fucked Seabreeze, you fucking white nigger Italian. Seventy-five thousand fucking dollars for the purpose of financing an acquisition or rehabilitation? I'll reel bait in you right now, nigga. It's called Trump economics. More Trump, more Trump, build a fucking wall. Then we go on to item number four, CD fourteen. Another fucking white nigger wetback from Sacatecas who took away our housing, subsidized it to wetbacks before offering it to you, the American dream people, veterans and American citizens, under your fucking policies. Fuck you too, City Attorney from Pasadena. Then I go on to the items on the back of this fucking agenda because I'm able to get one because I know where white niggers hide them. So we're talking about funding for repair of potential sinkholes. Why don't you fix all the fucking potential sinkholes? Because the fucking infrastructure in this city is so fucked up under Woollett versus Los Angeles and you can't fix a fucking sidewalk or curb ramp, you stupid white nigger Jews from Israel. In addition to that, Mr. Dawson and Mr. Weeza offer a reward for information. Well, fuck you. Snitches get stitches and I'm not going to rat out a motherfucker who takes a life for another. That's what we need in America. More fucking people getting killed, the same way they killed that man in Koreatown because he was simply on his fucking bike. And yet you want, what, zero to navigate us on a fucking bicycle path? Here's your zero. It looks like a fucking cunt with a big dick in it name, Pasadena City Attorney.
So I think you're off topic, Mr. Herman.
Now, my general public comment, white nigger, as you tried to suppress Mr. Preven on the item of the wall last day ago, and I got up and spoke, I demand a wall. I demand a wall because I'm a fucking American citizen living in an illness and sickness of this fucking world. And you don't got fucking shit for housing for people who are dying on the street because of the cold. These are life issues, motherfucker. And stop being a fucking crybaby, City Attorney, you jackass from Pasadena, and fuck your condo. I hope that fucking shit falls apart.
So, Mr. Herman, you're off topic. Please get on topic.
Now, this is general public comment. I criticize all fucking dumb fucks in this horseshoe because you fuck up our lives. The quality of it, like this is the same as Judge Carol Goodson, that TRO bitch who does her criminal TROs against people who us, who speak out against white nigger Jews like you, you fucking pacy short dick fucking asshole from Pasadena. Fuck you, jackass.
Ms. Antonia Ramirez, you're next. There's been a request to send item twenty-one forthwith. Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
You are speaking on items number ten and thirty-five in your general public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll just do public comments. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I want the nigger gang stalking against me to stop. Yesterday, I had an incident. I was out in my tent, waking up about six-thirty in the morning. Coming out of my tent, I heard a white trash force himself to cough. That was a signal to the two male and female fucking niggers who came out and ambushed me. As I was coming out of my tent, I went over, I saw them, I recognized them because they'd been harassing me for over a year and a half. That's a fucking hate crime. A year and a half at Grand Park, Music Center, Grand Park bathrooms, block one and four. They'd been harassing me for over a year and a half. I called and complained, but nobody would help me. I then went to the City Hall East, knocked, and the fat woman, the black fat woman, would not help me, only laughed. The police officers there at Two Hundred East would not help me. They just laughed. It's almost the end of the shift. These fucking niggers started throwing all my stuff and stole my stuff and threw stuff at me in the morning before seven o'clock in the morning. Stop the fucking gang buggers.
Ms. Ramirez?
Fucking nigger. Knock it off. I don't hurt you, I don't rob you.
Ms. Ramirez?
Stop the fucking nigger shit.
Are you going to go?
Stop it.
Thank you very much. Are you done?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
And Madam President, while we're, got this break, I suggest we give Mr. Herman a warning. He was up and down and moving.
Mr. Herman, you were warned earlier about your clapping and your laughing. If you can't control, you need to step outside. Let's go ahead, Ms. Ramirez, I need you to, Ms. Ramirez, I need you to lower your voice, please. Thank you. Thank you. Members, go ahead and vote on items one through ten. Let's open the roll. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
On one through ten, let's go ahead and vote on items twenty-two through thirty-four. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Here, those items pass. Mr. Rue?
Could we have twenty-six forthwith, please?
Yeah. Twenty-six forthwith for Mr. Rue. Okay, let's go ahead and go to general public comment before we go into closed session. Kathleen Larson, are you here? Kathleen Larson, are you here? Marcos Juarez?
We have Dennis Luna, there are two.
And Dennis Luna?
Dennis first.
Good morning, you have one minute each for general public comment.
And before we start, Madam President, we've closed multiple comments, is that correct?
That is correct. We've closed multiple comment cards, and now we're on to general public comment. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm referring to item 14. My name is Dennis Luna, I'm a current resident of the Montecito Apartments. When you pay rent for a property, you expect peaceful possession. A couple of years living within the construction site is not peaceful possession. You consider the impact on this construction project has on our neighbors, but not on us, the existing tenants living within the construction site. The owner's motto states to enrich the lives of those who reside in our buildings. Is this enrichment? Tell me, is this right? Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, we've already voted on item 13.
I was 14.
I'm sorry, 14, we've already voted on this item. So you're speaking in general public comment. Can I get the next speaker?
Kathleen Larson, also item number 14, it's the Montecito. And I'm sorry that you did vote for that because it should have been out of the package, it should have been not in the consent package. This thing is not complete, it did not account for the noise of the construction on the 120 people that will be living on this site for two years of construction. And we had to get an attorney to let you know that this is what is the problem. We objected to it, and what we would like to have is this thing should be recirculated again. Those back, should go back to the city planning to do the job that they should have done in analyzing what the effect was on the people that are going to be living on that construction site. And then it should be recirculated so the public comment can be had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and I've been, this is the second time, the one before that was in Van Nuys and now they're here, and I request again to stop city inspectors and investigators corruption. We've been suffering harassment, intimidation, retaliation, and criminal threats by criminal management companies. Now, city investigators, they've been harassing us, and they've been threatening us to approve another second illegal eviction because I keep complaining for the corruption. And I've been paying, they've been increasing the skate fees from the 361, now I'm paying $18 and close to $18 a month, and that's supposed to be only 361. All the reduction of services I request, they don't want to enforce it. As long landlords, let's keep protecting city investigators and inspectors, they keep protecting criminal management companies and as long landlords. So please, we need help, especially with disabled and low-income families. Thank you.
And that concludes general public comment. Members, we're going to move into closed sessions. Sergeants, can you please help me prepare the room? Item 35 is scheduled for closed session.
Oh, wow, Dr. Lartmouth King Jr. I mean, that speech, "I Have a Dream," is one of the moments. I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
It was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free. So no statue in the big apple can mess with me because I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful, black Statue of Liberty.
Gong Xi Fat Choy.
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year, celebrating with this parade, really welcoming all of the Angelitos to come out and celebrate part of our, part of our history, part of our culture.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? No, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices.
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County. Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business. To plan for my future.
To plan for my family. Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Creates a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Creates a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Creates a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Creates a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Can you tell me a part of African-American history that resonates with you?
Oh wow, Dr. Vartnute King Jr. I mean, that speech, I have a dream. It's one of the moments, I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
It was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free, so no statue in the Big Apple can mess with me, 'cause I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful, black Statue of Liberty.
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year celebrating with this parade, really welcoming all of the Angelinos to come out and celebrate part of our history, part of our culture.
Happy New Year. Go Hiphop Time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Not it, not it.
Again?
Hey Dad.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electoralize is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
It's just overwhelming to see that all this history on the wall and to know that some of my peers are still here to celebrate this.
I think it's important to really recognize and to honor all of the people who started out in a period when there really wasn't much available in terms of film.
My family's here, my kids, my grandchildren, and for them to really see their grandmother, you know, and to see this happening, this means the world to me.
The Information Technology Agency is here at this emergency exercise because there are two things happening in an emergency simulation today. One is there's a cyber attack, which means that people are attacking the systems that manage the city of Los Angeles. And number two is that there are simulated explosions happening across some of our transit systems. So information technology plays a key role in how people normally communicate during an emergency. So we are simulating that those systems are down today.
If we had a real disaster, the idea that you know your fellow responder is big because now you've had a chance to practice together, play together, and you'll work better together ultimately.
We have people that are ready and trained to act and keep people safe and keep them informed.
Can you tell me a part of African-American history that resonates with you?
Oh wow, Dr. Vartnute King Jr. I mean, that speech, I have a dream. It's one of the moments, I think, you know, America had to take a moment and hear his words.
It was a time in which we began to define who we were and made more steps towards realizing the freedom that our forefathers had fought for.
I will be reciting the Black Statue of Liberty poem. I'm taking all of my people back home and breaking them mentally free, so no statue in the Big Apple can mess with me, 'cause I'm the walking, talking, breathing, surviving, beautiful, black Statue of Liberty.
Hi, Happy Chinese New Year. Go Hiphop Time.
Today's a great day here in Chinatown. We're having the Chinese New Year celebrating with this parade, really welcoming all of the Angelinos to come out and celebrate part of our history, part of our culture.
Happy New Year. Go Hiphop Time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County...
Knowing when you need it most.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
We have theater, dance, music, film festivals, all kinds of performance art. We have classes seven days a week and theater upstairs. This is a solar-powered space. We produce about a third of our power on the roof, and we buy only green power from DWP.
The Electoralize is a wonderful place. It's benefited so many young students. The vibe is good.
It's just overwhelming to see that all this history on the wall and to know that some of my peers are still here to celebrate this.
I think it's important to really recognize and to honor all of the people who started out in a period when there really wasn't much available in terms of film.
My family's here, my kids, my grandchildren, and for them to really see their grandmother, you know, and to see this happening, this means the world to me.
The Information Technology Agency is here at this emergency exercise because there are two things happening in an emergency simulation today. One is there's a cyber attack, which means that people are attacking the systems that manage the city of Los Angeles. And number two is that there are simulated explosions happening across some of our transit systems. So information technology plays a key role in how people normally communicate during an emergency. So we are simulating that those systems are down today.
If we had a real disaster, the idea that you know your fellow responder is big because now you've had a chance to practice.
So Madam President, there is no final action reportable under the Brown Act?
Just go ahead and resume our meeting in open session. Madam Clerk, words before us.
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Can we all please rise for adjourned motions, please? Any adjourned motions on my right? Any adjourned motions on my left? Seeing none, have a good afternoon, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Wilmington and San Pedro have always been the gateway to Catalina since back in the late 1800s. My father, myself, and a friend of mine started Catalina Express along with my brother Tim in 1981. And we came in to actually replace the seaplanes that were at that point going out of service. So what we needed to do was replace that service with fast boats. So we went out, we bought one boat, it was a 50-passenger, and we started out with doing three runs a day. About a million to a million-two people go to and from Catalina on an annual basis. And back in 1981 when we started, I think we carried 3,500 people that year. Both my daughter Amanda and my son Eric, they're all in the business. This building was actually built back in 1966, and it was the seaplane hangar building. They'd take off underneath the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Our goal was, was really to make it so that people felt their trip started when they got here. There's bocce ball courts here located on premises, there's also a putting green. We got fire pits when it's chilly out, and people do seem to feel like they're on their way to Catalina as soon as they walk through the gate. Wilmington used to be the location for the freight service here to the island, and to bring them both onto the same property has been a home run. The Port of Los Angeles has been a real partner in this all the way along. They worked very well with us in trying to come up with a solution for this move. And I think that what we've come up with is one of the best locations we have. When we brought our employees back to this location, we were able to bring 100 employees back this way. Catalina Express employs approximately 325 employees in total, with the vessel crews and administration and ticket sales and the terminal facilities. Avalon Freight Services employs approximately 26 people, with operating the two vessels that we have, as well as the warehouse here and on the island. The island is always growing. It's been an exciting part of being, not just in passengers, but also in freight now. A normal week of freight going to Catalina Island is five days a week, 15 trailers, it's shipping fuel, it's food, it's beverages, it's everything you can imagine that has to go to an island to keep it moving. My favorite hobbies are getting out and going fishing. It's a lot of fun to go out off the island and do some fishing. It's always been known as a fishing paradise. Well, I think the favorite part of Catalina Express for me is working around the water. I've been around the water all my life. We just like to be a big part of this overall Catalina Express family. Our whole team here has worked hard to build what we've built. There's no eyes here, there's a lot of we's, and we really all enjoy it.
I never dreamed of going into politics. When I was eight years old, my dream was to go to college, get a great education, and stop the eviction notices that were constantly sent to my house. I'm Graciela Ortiz, a product of LAUSD, an educator, and a public servant. I was born and raised in Board District 5, Huntington Park to be exact. I was raised by a single mother because my father passed away when I was six months old. I'm the youngest of four, and the first in my family to go to college. I come from an LAUSD where only 50% of us graduated from high school. I'm one of the lucky ones. I graduated from high school and attended my dream school, UCLA, where I earned my bachelor's degree in sociology. I started working with children with special needs while going to graduate school at Cal State Long Beach. I earned my master's degree in social work and began my career at LA Unified as a pupil services and attendance counselor. I'm a licensed clinical social worker now, and I have dedicated 12 years to the amazing students of LA Unified, breaking down every possible barrier that impedes them from attending school and being successful. As a counselor and as a city council member, I've dedicated my career to providing opportunities to our children, opportunities that our communities and I never had. My story is the story of so many children in our district. This upcoming election shouldn't be about who has political power behind them, it's about the children in our communities. Our communities need an educational system that teaches our children that it's not if you go to college, it's about when you go to college. We need a system where all our schools are safe, fully funded, and preparing our children to attend the university of their dreams. It's time that we address the educational crisis that has hurt our communities for decades. It's time to elect an educator of today, a daily advocate for children, and a public servant for all. It's time to move forward, not backwards. I'm Graciela Ortiz, and on March 5th, I hope to earn your vote.
Hello, my name is Chamba Sanchez. I dedicated my
I have dedicated my entire life to serving those marginalized in our community. I am a former labor union organizer for the Justice for Janitor Union. Currently, I am a professor at LACC Illacan Trade Tech. I am seeking to represent LAUSD Board of Education District Number 5, because there is a crisis in our public education. Failing schools are a pipeline to prison. We cannot provide hope and opportunity for our students and poor communities if we don't fix our public schools. I was born in Salvador at age 15. I was forced to leave my country due to a bloody civil war. I was one of the first Dreamers who came illegally into this country in 1980. I was fortunate to be included in President Reagan's amnesty bill and became a naturalized citizen since the 1990s. Education is very personal for me. It radically changed my life for the better. It was in public education where a better future began for me. I want to use my personal story to inspire immigrants and poor childrens in this district. I believe every child deserves a quality education, one that will force them a brighter future. As a new LAUSD board member, I will fight for real parental empowerment. Embolment by parents must go beyond simply allowing them to participate in a parent community advisory board or a central committee. They should be given real authority to shape district-level decisions when it comes to the education of their children. I will advocate for the opportunity to allow non-citizen parents to vote in school board races, yes, empower parents by allowing them to vote regardless of their citizenship status. I will also fight for more resources in adult and elderly, as well as bilingual instructions. All of these investments are not only beneficial to our children, but also good for the health of our society. For funding, the needs are profound, and the current per pupil funding is inadequate. As a board member, I will use the powers of the office to bring in more revenue. I will use the ballot box for parcel tax and go to Sacramento and make the case to the legislature for more investment for our students. My name is Chamba Sanchez, and I asking you for your vote for, I asking you to vote for me for the Board of Education.